We stand in budge believe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll call this regular school board meeting of Independent School District Number 544 to order, and we'll begin by establishing our quorum. Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Kelly Graff.
Here.
Jenny Christensen.
Present.
Missy Hermes here. Melanie Cole.
Present.
Stephen Vigasa.
Here.
We have a quorum. All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Um, next is a resolution on acknowledgements, and we have several parties to thank. Thank you to Fergus Falls Noon Kuanas Club for their donation to Kennedy Secondary School for the upcoming music trip. Thank you to David Strepp and Michelle Beltran for their donation to Kennedy Secondary School for the upcoming music trip. Thank you to Ag Country Farm Credit Services for their donation to the Fergus Falls FFA chapter at Fergus Falls Public Schools. Thank you to Penny Rogelstedt, Linda McFarland, and Kim Gayden for their donation to the Fergus Falls Area Learning Center. Thank you to ABC Brewing LLC for their donation to the music program at Fergus Falls Public Schools. And thank you to Fergus Falls 544 Education Foundation for their donation to Fergus Falls Public Schools for the Teacher of the Year Awards. I'll offer that resolution and move for its adoption. Will someone second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the items? Clerk, will you please take a roll?
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Stephen Vigasa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Kelly Graff.
Yes.
Jenny Christensen.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. The resolution is adopted. Thank you. We have reports and correspondence, beginning with Kirby Anderson.
Yes, um, no, uh, no activity meetings since our last report. Um, but I do have, I'm sorry, uh, finance, no finance committee. That's just for you. No finance committee since last time we met. Um, we have had two 544 Foundation meetings since then, one on August fourteenth at noon and, I'm sorry, we have one more coming up this week on nine eleven at noon. Um, so at our last meeting, what we discussed was, uh, getting ready for, at that time, we're getting everything in-service staff meal that we just put on last Thursday. We served barbecues and apples and cookies and pickles and drinks for the, uh, all of the staff on their required in-service day. And the barbecues were from Viking Cafe, so that went very well. We do have the Otter Pride Taco in a Bag this Friday. Um, I think it's also a free admission because of Minnesota Motors sponsoring that, so we're going to thank them. And so we'll be serving Taco in a Bag from, uh, I believe it's four o'clock until we're, until we're out, or five o'clock. Um, also coming up is the Hall of Fame, um, and that's on homecoming weekend, September twentieth. That's on the schedule. And, uh, also discussed was a classroom wish list, and there's a copy of the classroom wish list up on the board there if anybody wants to take a look. And financially, the foundation is very healthy. They have, right now have 2.4 million in assets. So that's my report.
All right. Any questions for Kirby? All right, Jenny Christensen.
Um, Activities Committee has not met, so I do not have a report today.
Okay. As for my reports, uh, Region One, the regular monthly meeting, we're still, um, working to, um, familiarize the new director with the processes and so he goes, but nothing outstanding there. We talked about staffing and new music budget, uh, things we need to do, so, um, but all, all of these functions smoothly there. Say, Melanie, I think your mic turned off, sorry. Okay, and then as for meet and confer, we haven't met yet this year. So, that, that's the summary of my reports. Any questions? Kelly Graff?
Um, the Minnesota State High School League, I have not gotten anything from them, so they have not met yet. Stock development, I believe they meet this month, and wellness, um, have not met for all, as we've seen there. So none, for me.
All right. Then we'll move on to Missy Hermes.
All right, the Curriculum Review Advisory Committee will not meet in October. And, um, the Policy Committee, um, has not had recently, but I just want to clarify that, um, the policy for student appearance and dress is on the website, the correct policy. So if people need to refer to it, that's where they should look, on the website, and it's Policy Number 544.
All right, thank you. Have you encountered some people inquiring?
Well, um, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
There's just a need for clarification, and, um, the policy that caucus board voted on, um, was not one that would be subject to that.
Okay.
What's on there now is what the people should go by.
Thank you for the clarification.
The Buildings and Grounds Committee, let's make sure. Um, the Buildings and Grounds Committee has not met. We're overdue for a meeting though. Um, so we should get something on the docket for that. That's all I have.
All right, and we'll turn to Superintendent Drake.
All right, good evening. Uh, first, a proclamation, uh, the Minnesota School Board Recognition Month, September twenty twenty-five, Guiding Light for Student Success. Whereas Fergus Falls School District 544 recognizes the importance of public education in our community, and whereas Fergus Falls School District 544 appreciates the vital role played by those individuals who, as local school board members, establish policies to ensure an efficient, effective school system, and whereas school board members serve as a voice that enables our community to preserve local management and control of our public schools, and whereas school board members are charged with representing our local education interests to state and federal governments and ensuring compliance with state and federal laws, and whereas school board members selflessly devote their knowledge, time, and talents as advocates for our schoolchildren, whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. Now therefore be it resolved that Fergus Falls School District 544 recognizes and salutes the members of the Fergus Falls School Board by proclaiming September twenty twenty-five as School Board Recognition Month. And on behalf of the district, thanks for your service and your contributions and your care and attention to our students and staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I've got lots of good stuff for my report tonight. Uh, first is just a thank you to our staff. Uh, we really had, forgive, there's a little bit of a time lapse with the monitors, so just be aware of that. Um, but we really had a very, very smooth start to our school year, and, um, a lot of things happened behind the scenes to make that possible, so just want to express my gratitude for all that is involved in getting us off to a great start. Uh, some congratulatory notes this evening. Uh, so we honored, uh, at our Welcome Back, uh, some Employees of the Year. Uh, at our annual Welcome Back Coaches Banquet at the Legion, uh, we recognized two Assistant Coaches of the Year. It was Co-Assistant Coaches of the Year. I think that's the first time uh, that that has happened since I've been here, but both well-deserving. Uh, Norm Newell, uh, is an Assistant Coach for Girls Tennis, so congratulations to Norm. And David Dirks is an Assistant Coach to the Football Program, so congratulations to David. Our Head Coach of the Year, uh, is Chris Krebaska with our Fergus Falls Otters Football Program, so congratulations to Chris. And then, uh, Mindy Christensen, on behalf of the EA, announced, uh, our Teacher of the Year. And, uh, similar to our Otter Assistant Coaches of the Year, we were blessed with Co-Teachers of the Year for Fergus Falls Public Schools. So congratulations to Ethan Soland and Nikki Weldy. Uh, both very well-deserving, very hardworking, passionate about our students, uh, and innovative. Uh, so congratulations to Ethan and Nikki on being the FFBA Fergus Falls Public Schools Teachers of the Year. And then this news is hot off the presses. I got this this morning. Um, so last spring, uh, there was an opportunity, uh, to submit some, uh, supporting materials on behalf of Jen Kohorst as a potential Minnesota Nurse of the Year, School Nurse of the Year. And I received a notice this morning, uh, that she has received that wonderful honor. So congratulations to Jen Kohorst, and, uh, certainly does a wonderful job leading her staff and help, help us, uh, to keep our students' health and safety always at the forefront, uh, in her work on the, uh, chairing the Wellness Committee. Um, the support she gave us through the pandemic, uh, much, much appreciated, and again, congratulations to Jen, uh, very well-deserved. Uh, she will receive that award, uh, down in, uh, in Minneapolis in mid-November, I believe, so, uh, something to look forward to. Uh, this is our Otter Portrait of a Graduate, uh, for our community's information. Uh, there are five Cs that are the cornerstones of our vision for Otter Education. It is Core Knowledge, so that's the curriculum that they learn, uh, the classroom content that they study. Creative Problem Solver is taking that information that they learned and applying it to, uh, address real world problems, uh, that would affect their lives. Uh, that's also rolled into Communicator, uh, so not only do they need to have the knowledge and the ideas, uh, but they need to develop effective, uh, written and oral communication skills, including the ability to create and communicate, um, across cultures. And then, um, one that is really important to us is character, uh, because all of the, um, learning in the world and getting on the honor rolls, et cetera, um, we really lose the battle if we are not graduating uh, students with high moral, uh, character and integrity. And then all of those things, uh, kind of weave together to form really positive contributing citizens, which is ultimately our goal. So, uh, that is the vision for Otter Education. There's one, uh, new piece under Core Knowledge, uh, that we added after our admin retreat this year, and that's on Digital Literacy. And really affects, or is intended to represent, uh, the growing place that technology, uh, plays in our, uh, in our world and in their education, and to be, um, conscientious stewards of the information and how to analyze what is accurate and what is not accurate, so putting those critical thinking skills to use, but also how to harness its power and abilities to, uh, produce better work and to work more efficiently. So, uh, Digital Literacy is a new category under Core Knowledge. Uh, School Enrollment Information, so I received updates from the, uh, principals at the, uh, kind of midday last Friday. Uh, things could have changed a little bit, but I would say these are pretty solid. Um, these are more or less organized by building. And so, uh, the one exception to that is kind of that preschool kindergarten, because we do have three sections of first grade in Lincoln this year, um, but everything else is kind of organized by building. Uh, I'm going to just point out, uh, to a couple numbers that are really important. Uh, the one is in the center column, uh, you'll see the ALC numbers are in green. They're sitting at seventy-six students. Uh, we try to cap ALC enrollment at eighty to keep those class sizes small and have the, uh, kind of environment that we want for those, to support those students. Uh, but our total enrollment is at twenty-five, um, it's a little bit away from my eyes. Is that twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-two? Um, so two thousand five hundred and twenty-two students, that's brick and mortar. Uh, that would include, uh, the preschool number, um, that would also represent both full-time and part-time students. So twenty-five, twenty-two, that's a really good solid number for us, um, in kind of keeping in line with what we've seen, uh, last year, and, and so that stability is welcome. Um, we do have a smaller kindergarten class at one twenty-six. Uh, hopefully that class can grow as the years go on. Uh, we are aware that a number of parents decided to keep their students back uh, in preschool for one additional year. Uh, you'll see in the, um, uh, that kind of, uh, uh, turquoise blue color, that's School of Choice. And so those students are attending two days a week, and they're on a, uh, kind of a part-time basis. Uh, but we have eighteen in the one group Monday and Tuesdays, and then we have fifteen, uh, on Wednesdays and Thursdays. Um, so the total district enrollment, because those were part-time, um, I did not include the School of Choice numbers in that. Uh, but when we go down to the, um, two columns on the far right, uh, that's our IQ enrollment. Ryan updated the grand total late Friday afternoon, but not the numbers, uh, by corresponding to each grade level. So if anyone's at home and they're doing the quick math, the numbers on the side are not going to match the seven thirty at the bottom. You'll just have to take my word for it that we have seven hundred and thirty, and the, uh, numbers by grade just need to be updated, um, in our system, so that's coming. Uh, but when you look at our, uh, twenty-five, twenty-two, brick and mortar, and our seven thirty, uh, IQ, which will grow throughout the year, uh, that gives us a total enrollment of thirty-two fifty-two, um, which is a really, uh, that's really solid news for the district. Uh, just want to recognize, uh, some of the creativity of our teaching staff. Uh, this is Jessica Colheas's first grade class. Uh, Jessica really does a wonderful job every year, coming up with very creative ideas, uh, that support student learning. Uh, I've been in her classroom before when they had a medical theme where the kids were all dressed as doctors, uh, for the day. And, uh, just want to, uh, let the public know how creative and dedicated our teachers are and, uh, how they go, really go the extra mile to make sure that, uh, we have an exciting and invigorating learning experience for our kids. So, uh, with appreciation to Jessica Colheas for the really creative, uh, lesson that she put together. Uh, congratulations also to Otter Food Service for serving fifty, over fifty-two thousand meals this summer. Uh, much appreciated by the staff. And then, uh, Lance Wells, uh, our Food Service Director, just gave me a quick snapshot on, uh, how the year has rolled out so far, uh, with the number of planned meals, the number served, how many meals were left over, and then the number of choices offered. So the choices offered, uh, would really be more reflective of KSS. Uh, we don't have the ability to offer all of those choices at the other schools. And predicting that stuff is a little bit tricky at the beginning of the year. He does look at his data every time to see how many of which meals were the popular ones. Uh, even though we may have had, uh, meals left over in that, uh, fourth column, that doesn't necessarily assure that everyone got the meal that they really had hoped to get. If you wanted a cheeseburger, they may have run out of cheeseburgers, but maybe you had a sloppy joe that you could have chosen instead. So, uh, he continues to look at the choices that he offers, uh, and tries to gauge how many to make, uh, to match up with the students' interests along the way. Uh, this is really important information, so with the advent of preschool, uh, meals, breakfast and lunch, we've seen a downturn in the, uh, educational benefits applications. Uh, but those applications really play a crucial role in supporting, uh, not only special services and supports for families, but also additional revenue for our schools. That's really, uh, important. Uh, so you'll see that if, uh, your child is part of the SNAP program, uh, MFIP, FDPIR, uh, if they're a foster student, homeless, migrant, or runaway children, they can qualify for, um, those benefits, uh, without reporting household income. But we also have the ability to, uh, qualify, or the state has the ability to qualify students, um, based on their family income. And so that's where that application comes in. Having the qualifications also allows, uh, discounts for activity fees and also Chromebook insurance discounts. So those are some tangible benefits, uh, to our families. And then on the form, the, um, the words are a little short or small on this presentation. Uh, but if you look it up on Minnesota Department of Education, you can see other benefits to families for completing the Educational Benefits Application. Uh, and then two big, uh, areas for us on the funding side are compensatory dollars and Title I funding. Both of those go to support additional tutoring in the areas of reading and math. Uh, for families that are interested in filling out the application, if you go to the Otter, uh, our website, our Fergus Falls Public Schools website, uh, and go under Programs, about the third one down is Food Service. And when you see that, you'll see the, um, oh, there's about, uh, twelve different tabs there. Uh, most of them are blue, but the one in the upper left-hand corner on the screen is, um, the one for the Meals Application. So that's what you would kick, uh, click on, and then that will take you to a link to complete the application online. Uh, Otter Pride Night, as Kirby mentioned earlier, Friday, September twelfth, five to seven. Um, we have lots of kids' games in the Gold Gym, uh, the Foundation sponsoring Taco in a Bag. Uh, really nice meal for only five dollars, and as always, a huge shout-out to Minnesota Motor Company for, uh, sponsoring admission into that night's, uh, football game. So really looking forward to that. Uh, we also have a very early Homecoming this year, uh, so we'll go through Otter Pride Night and then kick right into Homecoming Week uh, with Monday's Evening Coronation, uh, that is open to the public. Uh, there will be other activities for the kids, uh, during the week, dress-up, various dress-up days, et cetera. Uh, all culminating, um, in Ironman Volleyball, Powder Puff Football on Homecoming Friday, uh, with the parade taking place at two PM. And then the, um, football game that evening and dance to follow for grades nine through twelve. Uh, if you are looking to outfit yourself in some great Otter gear, uh, you can order it or purchase it through the Otter Outlet. And then for a limited time, uh, also through our Activities Department, uh, there's a fan store there, uh, where people can, um, order their Otter gear. I included this picture. There's no story behind it really, except that it's really, really cool. And so this is on our, uh, Activities website. Uh, Josh McGowan is the one that photographed this shot. Um, obviously, um, highlighting boys soccer, uh, but just the creativity of it and capturing that moment, I thought, was, uh, really, really well-done, so I wanted to highlight that for you this evening. Uh, I will start my first of the monthly Community Connections on September eighteenth. That will be right here in this room from five to six PM. Uh, please come with any questions, concerns, ideas that you have. Uh, it is your open forum, with a small exception, uh, this year. I will start out, uh, that evening with a quick, uh, quick overview of our new, uh, Crisis Response Protocols, uh, so that our parents and families become familiar with those. Uh, but then we'll certainly transition into, um, on the eighteenth, uh, an opportunity for you to ask whatever questions or share whatever concerns that you have, and looking forward, uh, to those once again this year. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
There are no questions. One of the biggest, uh, disservices they did with the, um, the equity money is attached to free and reduced meals. The two things are very separate, and it's, uh, a lot of times just doesn't make sense to the public. So thanks for going through all that with detail. All right, well, we'll keep moving on our agenda, and for, um, our next item, we'll have the General Consent Items. And for consideration for approval are the minutes from our last school board meeting on August twenty-fifth. And I'll turn to you, Jenny, for Bills and Treasurers Report.
All right, I will start with our Treasurers Report. And for the month, the past month, our beginning balance for General Fund was at eighteen point eight million. Ending balance was at twenty-two point eight million. Our Food Service Fund, beginning balance was about one million, uh, ending at about one million. Uh, Community Service Fund started at two hundred thousand, ended at one hundred and four thousand. Our Construction Fund is still sitting pretty solid at, uh, one million, ending at one million. Our Debt Service Fund started at two point three million, ending at two point five million. Trust Fund at a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, ending at a hundred and forty-eight thousand. And our Activities Fund, starting at three hundred and thirty thousand, ending at three hundred and thirty-four thousand. Our total receipts for the month of August, uh, totaled about seven million. Um, wanted to note that that is mostly general education aid and special education aid for both fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six. For those who do not know, um, the aid that comes in from the state, comes in in percentages, so we'll get a certain per, like, I, I want to say that the, it is a ninety-ten split, so we will get ninety percent of it for this year now, and then the other ten percent will come next year. So we got the remaining ten percent from fiscal year twenty-five, plus our ninety percent of fiscal year twenty-six. Um, it is up a little bit from previous years because of our, um, increased enrollment, as well as, um, an increase in special education reimbursements. Um, our total invoices paid out was about one point eight million, and that included our total payroll payout of one point one million. Uh, moving on to the bills for the past two weeks, um, we are looking at our General Fund, uh, receipts, or excuse me, expenditures of nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, Food Service, thirty-two thousand. Community Service Fund at two hundred and three thousand, and our Student Activity Fund, a whopping one hundred and forty-two dollars. And, uh, so our total invoices paid out for this period of time was one point two million. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Yeah.
We have personnel items that include two certified hires. Beth Jermelus, uh, long-term substitute for Special Ed, and Claire Guthier, elementary teacher, we added, um, point one, six, six, seven, so just added a, a bit to her contract. Overload contracts to the, uh, these are existing teachers who are teaching more than full-time, so we pay them for that. Christine Salakar and Josh Steer. Uh, we had one support staff resignation. Kathy Barker is going to end her Special Ed paraprofessional work on September nineteenth. And then support staff hires include Dylan Pollack, um, Josie Leach, Elise Hansen, Ella Metcalf, Samuel Weber, and Maggie Torgerson. And any, anyone wanting fuller details can look in the minutes for the physicians they're hired for. So with that, is there a motion to approve the, um, General Consent?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on these items? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that's approved, and we'll move on to, um, seek a motion to approve the IQ Academy Handbook Changes, or the overall handbook put together, um, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right. And, um, any discussion on the IQ Academy Handbook?
I think a lot of it is, uh, just updating the school calendar. Um, you know, the, everything from the semester dates to when there's school and when there isn't school, when enrollment starts, when it, when it closes. Um, I think that there's some different, a couple different, uh, personnel things that changed, uh, as far as who's the coordinator. And I think the main thing was adding acceptable AI use for the IQ students. That was kind of the, the biggest change. I looked all that over and it looks very good.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, we have, um, in our packet, a Staff Development Proposal for the Use and Implementation of Staff Development Funds for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Is there a motion to approve that? And is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, we have also before us a twenty-five, twenty-six collaborative agreement between West Central, uh, Minnesota Communities Action Council, the Head Start Program, and our Public School District. Is there someone who would make a motion to approve that?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved. And the last item, a new business for this evening, is seeking a motion to accept $4,100 bid offer for the sale of the district's 2016 Chevy Cruze. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
All right. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? So this is our driver's ed car, yeah? Yeah. All right. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved. Some lucky guy got that car. Now, we will stick around, we've concluded our agenda for this evening, for the meeting, and we have work session, which is going to... Hearing why the microphones shut off all the time. And, but, work session, we'll talk with the music department a bit, we'll talk about our farm lease, marketing, and then review for handbook for the board to... So with that, our next meeting is here on Monday, September 22nd at 5:15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
All right, and a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, we are adjourned, thank you.